United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God, and justice. Okay, public service announcement. Case, do you have any?
I have none.
Okay. Mary, do you?
No.
Mike?
No.
Ian?
No.
And I have none. Okay, so could we please have a moment of silence then for all those affected by COVID-19? Okay, thank you. Okay, on our agenda this evening, we have consideration and possible action on a request by Yankee Spirits to approve the pledge of their liquor license to Rockland Trust Company. We have department reports from the police department, water and sewer, town administrator. We have several action items, consideration and possible action on resignation, part-time dispatch on Melissa Palmer from the Sturbridge Police Department, consideration and possible action on the resignation of Todd Millers, economic development coordinator. We have consideration and possible action on an agreement with Commonwealth Massachusetts for the acceptance of $150,000 Mass Trails grant for the Grand Trunk Trail West Side section. We have consideration and possible action on a challenged partnership agreement between the Department of the Department and Town of Sturbridge for the construction of a portion of the Grand Trunk Trail. We have consideration and possible action on a contract for commissioning services for rooftop units one and two at the Public Safety Facility. Consideration and possible action on the lease of an office trailer for the school bus drivers for one year to be located at the Department of Public Works. Consideration and possible action for survey for 70 feet of street. Consideration and possible action on the election markets for the primary and general election. Consideration and possible action on the primary election warrant. And we have old business, which we have discussion of an upgrade to the water meters for COVID-19 updates. We have new business items from the Board of Assessors regarding preliminary billing letter and one regarding resignation, so there's a vacancy, and a letter requesting the setting of a hearing on the classification of values. We have correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens forum, and then we go to June. Okay, so the first thing is the Yankee Spirits requested approval of pledges. I think an inventory. Is the sentiment here, was?
Nick, are you on the call or are you on the meeting?
I, yeah, I'm here. Nick Amonti from Fitzgerald Attorneys at Law, here representing Yankee Spirits. I don't know if you want to hear from me. Just basically what's happening is Yankee Spirits is in the process thing of restructuring some existing debt and in connection with the restructuring, this Rockland Trust Company has asked Yankee Spirits to amend the pledge of their liquor license from the current holder of their debt to Rockland Trust. Before you, you should have the application, the applicant statement, the corporate vote, the certificate of standing, the draft revolving note, the pledge of liquor license, and the payment confirmation. I believe that that's everything that's required. And if you find everything in order, we would just respectfully request that the Board approve the pledge as presented.
Okay, thank you. Anyone on the board have any questions or comments? Okay, is somebody willing to make a motion then? I'll make-
Oh, go ahead, Nick.
Don't go, good.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the pledge of the liquor license by Yankee Spirits to Rockland Trust Company. Chase?
I'll second it, Mary.
And Ian, how do you vote?
I'm gonna abstain from the vote.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yes. Mike?
Mary?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that's three yeses and one extension. Okay, thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Nick.
Okay, next we have partner reports. First up, in terms of police chief, do you get it? Ian, Earl?
Good evening, how are you tonight?
How are you?
Good, thank you. So tonight I have June and July reports. The one thing that I really wanted to point out was the, on June 4th, police department received re-accreditation officially on June 4th, so that was a pretty big deal as usual. Other than that, it's been operationally business as usual. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Okay, anyone have any questions on the June report? Congratulations, by the way, chief.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions on the July report? Chief, I just noticed on a couple of them, under the incident status, don't know if you have the same paper we do, on page 59.
Of which report?
This is July.
What page did you say?
Uh, our page 59.
It's your page one of the status report.
Okay.
July 1st.
What was the question?
Well, we're, just a little explanation needed. That first incident seems to have sixteen incidents. Lot of breaking and entering on boats and autos?
Yes, I've been putting stuff out for months now on social media. We've been getting hit, in fact, this weekend we had two cars stolen as well. There's a group of, we believe it's teenagers, they've been coming into not just Sturbridge, all over the place, through all Massachusetts and Connecticut. It's a gang of, we believe juveniles. They're stealing cars, they're going in unlocked vehicles, and if your keys or your fobs are in there, they're taking the vehicles, they're coming into town in stolen vehicles, leaving and stealing vehicles from town. I've been trying to hit it up with social media, getting people to lock their cars. We've been fortunate, they're not smashing windows or doing anything like that, but if your car's open and unlocked, and the keys are in it, they're stealing them and they're taking whatever valuables are in it, small electronics and whatever you have, money, medicine.
Chief, are they breaking in, like, is there a pattern? Is it in the middle of the night more, out of people's driveways, or is it during the day? And are you finding these in the city somewhere? Are you finding the vehicles?
Yeah, we're recovering the one vehicle today, was covered out way out in New York, upstate New York, but most of our vehicles that we've had stolen have been recovered right in Hartford, right along the, generally right along the same area in Hartford. So, and we have intel that says that it's a juvenile gang, that this is what they're doing, they're going around and they're joyriding with the vehicles. There's been several communities that have been involved with pursuits. They have been known to be armed, some of the kids, so it's pretty dangerous for our officers out there. We had two vehicles stolen on Cedar Street this weekend, and they ended up, actually two of the vehicles crashed at Hall Road in Whittamore, and then they jumped into a third vehicle and they took off. So, and it's happening after, usually generally after midnight.
Yeah, that's the night of that incident, I live on Cedar Street, and my, all our car alarms in our driveway went off at the same time, so.
Yeah, that's funny. Lock up your doors, report any suspicious activity, car alarms going off at night, call 911, let us know so we can get over there. The other problem is we're having, they are running from us. We've had several pursuits, and they're taking off from us, so we've got to be very careful how we approach that situation.
So the accident, I've had a few people ask about that, those were stolen vehicles? That, and?
All.
Okay, was anybody hurt in that one?
Nobody was hurt. By the time the officers got there, they were already gone and jumped into another vehicle. My officer, one of the, actually Sergeant Lombardi, was following them, waiting for additional units because there was only him and one other officer before he initiated a stop because we know that they've been armed. So, you know, we always want to make sure that we have one or two more than they have, and we knew at minimum there was three people because there was three cars being driven. So, but by the time he got to the location, they had already jumped into the third vehicle and they were out of there. So one of those vehicles was returned today, with some front-end damage, and the other one's still in our impound log.
I know that the department's been doing a good job on social media, trying to get the message out, but somehow people just don't listen.
Yeah, well, it's, and I'll keep pushing it, I'll keep, we're down at the senior center pushing information to the seniors, letting them know, because maybe they're not on social media. I'm considering maybe a code red notification too for some people that maybe don't have social media, maybe we can reach out to them that way, so that may be coming over the next day or so.
Right. The more messages that get out, the better, that a few more people listening, not everyone anymore listening.
It is amazing, it is amazing how many people don't lock their cars.
Oh, I know, I can't believe, and leave the keys in it.
Right, and leave the keys in it. It's, you know, there's a bunch of them.
Does anybody have anything else for the chief? Mary?
There's a little bit, well, it is off the subject of the stolen vehicles, but the motor vehicle citation, I was just curious, the June and July, if you compare them to 2019, it's less than half, and is that because there's not a push as much because of COVID? You don't want to pull cars over and make them uncomfortable, or?
Well, initially, and yes, good question. Initially, at the onset of the pandemic, we were really backing off our traffic stops and only looking for blatant violations or dangerous violations or stops that people called in 911. We have since began to move that up a little bit more, but that is definitely in my opinion of why we're seeing less now compared to last year, because there was, you know, a lot of discretion is left up to the officer, how much contact do they want to have with somebody's driver license, somebody's registration, their paperwork. But they are still out there, still doing radar assignments and addressing stuff, but I would certainly relate the two together.
Okay, and I'm not saying, I agree that the discretion is a good thing, I was just curious as to the reason why, but that was my assumption, you know, the less contact with the public on both sides unless it's particularly-
Jesus.
So, I agree with that approach, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else have anything for the chief? Do you have anything else, Earl?
No, I don't know if you need me on for the resignation, Melissa Palmer, further down, or chief?
Uh, that's usually short and sweet, though.
Yep, so I'll be on.
I don't want to change the portal page, so really not necessary, but thank you for offering.
All right, sounds good. Have a good night.
You have a good one, too. Okay, next we have water and sewer, Shane?
Good evening, how you doing?
How are you?
Good. I turned in operation reports for June and July, I'll start with any questions you have on those.
I just have a comment, when I looked at the report, flow for June is also repeated in July.
Yeah, I just noticed that too, when I was looking at them, I was in a hurry trying to get them in so you'd have the reports. I will recommit tomorrow, so you'll have the correct numbers. I have the correct numbers in front of me, the water flows are up, they're even up higher than they were at this time last year, and I think that's due to the drought and people using a lot more water, and obviously the heat waves we've had, the wastewater, I've seen it in the 14 years I've been here, it's under $300,000 a day, which believe it or not makes it even harder to make permit because it's really concentrated, but today we haven't had any violations. So I'll reissue another report tomorrow, Jeff, so you guys can have it in front of you.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I just noticed it when I was reading, I said, boy, that's exactly the same thing, and then I looked across, month, and it said June.
Yeah, that's on me, I apologize for that, like I said, I'll recommit tomorrow.
Okay. Anybody have a question, Mary?
I just had a couple. So our house is one of the ones that gets tested for the water, I know you need a number of samples. Were there any viol-, were there any households that exceeded the DEP, the regulations with respect to lead or anything?
No, so we were required to collect 20 lead and copper samples, we've done so, we analyzed them, none of them, none of our, only two samples showed any traces of lead out of 20, and none of them were even close to the actual limit of both lead and copper. And I notified all the homeowners, blood had went out, we mailed to the homeowners on Friday. I've been working with the schools all summer and far as flushing the schools and keeping fresh water up there, and I just read back from the DEP the other day, we'll be sampling all the schools for lead and copper in September. I really don't believe there'll be an issue, for the simple reason, you have very good corrosion control, and the numbers that we saw from the households we tested were really good, so not anticipating any issues, but the next time I come before you, the schools will be tested and I'll have those results called from.
Awesome. Shane, do you think that you could put it in the report itself?
Yeah, not a problem.
All right, and I just had something that I wanted to give a shout out to, our grinder pump died of old age a couple weekends ago, and I just want to thank the water, I know it's nothing we did wrong, but it's been in since we got on town services, so I just wanted to thank the Viola and the DPW, they came quickly, and I think the gentleman's name is Aim, do you have a Wayne that works for you?
I know.
Okay, and he, I was not here, but my husband was, and he said he was very professional, very knowledgeable, very courteous, and he wanted me to make sure I gave a shout out to him and the Viola, so thank you very much. It's amazing, something like that goes, how desperate you do become, so we're very dependent on our water department, and I just want to thank you for a job well done.
Thank you, and I'll be certain to pass that along to Wayne, Wayne's been with me for like 10 years, he's one of, he's a very good employee, and he does very good work.
Exactly, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else on the board? Mike?
Yes, Shane, I got a question about my, my same question I've had in the last few times you've had a report, it's about septicage. I noticed that, you know, well over 90% of our septicage comes out of, from out of town, and is it true that there's at least one hauler that can, is allowed to dump overnight when there's nobody there?
There's actually two haulers that are allowed to dump overnight there, because the septic system is set up, it's like so that we can see who comes in, they leave a sample each second in the morning. We've been doing this, I can say, almost a year now, and it worked out for us and it worked out for them.
Okay. So they take their own sample and leave it there for you?
Yeah, we have a refrigerator that we keep outside upstairs that they leave the sample in, and then we test it first thing in the morning. Like I said, it works out for both of us, and to date there hasn't been any issues with that. Right up front, they were warned if we had any issues, you know, that's really more of a privilege than anything, that that privilege would be removed.
The, I mean, since it appears like we're a popular destination for septicage, so at some point I would throw out there that maybe we should take a look at our rate, especially for out of town, and make sure it's competitive with, you know, some of the surrounding towns?
Yeah, we did that a couple years ago, and believe it or not, there is a neighboring town that takes probably five times the septicage we do for the simple reason, they don't have a zinc limit, so they don't have to worry about that. But what I will do is I will call around, get prices, and we can see what we're billing people versus what other people are doing.
Can I? Good.
Mary? I just want to follow up with what Mike inquired about, the ones that are dumping it overnight and leaving the sample. Isn't it quite like too late because they've already dumped it? I mean, like, during the day, do you check the sample first before they dump, and in this case, it's the opposite, or am I wrong?
No, we just don't have the people, the manpower to test everything that comes in, so that's the normal, we see during the day, they take a sample, they leave it in the fridge with the slip number so we know where it came from, and then we test it when we have a chance to, and like I said, to date, there hasn't been any issues, and really, we don't have a lot of haulers, we have swims, and we have wind rivers, those are our two biggest, and we work pretty good with them. It's a win-win situation as far as I see it, and to date, we just haven't had any problems. And again, you know, we've been very upfront with them, if we have problems with you, we just won't let you come yet, it's that simple.
Okay, so Shane, I'm just in the process, they leave a sample and they dump, check it out, so let's just say the sample did have things in it that we didn't want, they've already dumped it, it just stopped, they're just stopped from doing it in the future? Like, once it's dumped, there's nothing you can do about it, right?
Well, it's sitting in a, it's sitting in a holding tank, so that holding tank, we only try to turn it on at night, especially this time of year, we're not taking a lot, so if there was an issue, we could have them come back and clean up the holding tank, or like you said, we would just stop them from coming back ever again.
Okay, but you could clear out the holding tank if you needed.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else from the board? Shane, do you have anything else for us?
Just, I expect to see a construction schedule on the Fisk Hill Bus Station within the next couple weeks, and we'll be up there, they'll be up there, gonna put all the pipes in, run all the conduit, get it ready, and then that way, when the station is built, they'll just have to come in and drop it in with their crane, so you will see us up there working sometime September.
Okay, thank you.
And then I, do you need me to stay on for the meter upgrade, or are you all set?
Um, I think the board would appreciate it if you did stay on.
That's fine, that's no problem.
Okay, next we have Jeff's-
I'll answer for him.
Next we have Jeff's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members, my report's in the packet. If you have any questions on anything, please let me know. Just an additional couple items, we talked about the Old Mill Dam last meeting, the owners of Sturbridge Marketplace have challenged their ownership of their portion of the dam, so they reached back out to the state to, and gave them a new title search and are appealing that decision of the state, so for now, we're kind of on our own when it comes to doing anything in compliance with the dam. Having said that, we are contracted with McClure Engineering to do the Phase One study, which is the six-month safety study that's required initially, so McClure is on board for doing that, and Butch can answer any questions, he's on here as well. And then OSV today made a decision to shut down their food service operation and their catering operation for now due to COVID, so weddings and some of those things will be on hold for now, but that was, that came out this afternoon through the STA. So we're still, even though we're somewhat open, we're still having impacts due to COVID, so. Other than that, if you happen to answer any questions, if you want to jump to the water meter discussion that's under old business, we can. It's up to you.
Okay. Okay, Jeff, you want to go through it, please?
Sure. At the last meeting, Selectman Supernat talked about meters that kind of send their own information to a point to be calculated for billing purposes. I asked Shane to reach out to a vendor that would supply such meters and get some pricing on those things, so, and he did that. We have roughly 1,750 meters, the price to upgrade the meters per, you know, per each one is $190, to add what's called the endpoint. And then there's a monthly unit price for the connectivity and so forth, so just to purchase the meter upgrades without installation is $332,000, and then you'd have to add on the labor to install those. If you contract that out, that's prevailing wage, so you're into this for at least a half a million dollars to upgrade the meters to the latest and greatest meter technology.
What page is all this on? I read it once, but no.
Page 228?
Page 228, Mary. 22?
Okay. And Mike, was that the meters you were talking about?
Yeah, I guess we use Badger meters, and that's, that sounds like the Badger system.
Right.
Shane or?
So, Mary, so that's to upgrade the actual meters, a half a million, which I understand is a significant investment right now, but what about being able to notify residents at least monthly or every two weeks when they hit a certain percentage over their typical usage, so they can at least look into leaks and that type of thing? What kind of, I know that's more manpower, but do we have input on that?
Yeah, we're still working out, we're still working out a process to do that, so when everybody's back from their holidays and vacations, we'll get together and try to test run something like that and see how it does. It's a function of matching the software with the capabilities in the meter reading, so we'll see how that goes and probably have an update on a test run for you all sometime in October.
Okay, super, because that's great.
Yeah, because don't forget, over and above that $500,000 we're talking about, there's an 89 cent per unit per month cost for- talking about, there's an eighty-nine cent per unit per month cost for it to add another eighteen thousand, six hundred ninety annually to it. It's quite steep, but if we can get that other information, I think that would be helpful. I personally would not support the update at this price. I really don't think it's necessary. Okay, Mary, how do you feel?
I feel the same way. I think, I don't know where we're at in the life cycle of these meters, but they all work fine and it seems to be that the percentage of issues is pretty low to spend such a significant amount of money.
I agree. Chase, how do you feel?
I, I agree with, uh, Selectman Donegan there. At this point in time, everything seems to be working good. That's a lot of money to spend right now.
Okay, but we'll get that other information then.
Yeah, we've got to work out a logistics process, um, and it won't be any more frequently than once a month because in order for it to work, we have to actually read the meters and input that into, uh, the software. So we have to be able to input that information into the software without the software producing a bill, but producing a report. So there needs to be some understanding of how those Munis, our financial software package interfaces with the Badger meter reading software, and where can we go to produce a report without producing a bill? Because we bill quarterly.
But that would still, if we were to do it, that's still helpful because if somebody has a leak for three months, at least their bill is cut by a third, I'm sorry, cut by two-thirds if they correct it.
Right, right.
So that's very useful if we're able to do something like that, even monthly.
Okay, you do what else, Ed, on that? Jeff?
Just one more item to point out on my report. I did, we did provide the meals and lodging tax information for the fourth quarter of two thousand twenty. You can see the impact that, that shutdown had on those, those industries. Um, half of the meals tax was collected and, you know, a quarter of the lodging tax was collected, so those two industries were hit very hard, and, uh, hopefully we can get them recovered here, you know, moving into two thousand twenty-one.
Well, I'm sure it'll hopefully be better than the fourth quarter, but I don't think it's going to get back to what it was before the pandemic hit.
It'll be a while, yeah.
But as long as things have, so.
And I did.
So we're, upset on that?
I did provide certifications on the marijuana retailers. Was that acceptable and they're compliant?
Mary's the one that wanted that.
Yep, no, thank you. I think it's useful to have if we ever need.
Okay. I'm all set, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Okay, next on the agenda, we have consideration impossible action on the resignation of Todd Miller from the Sturbridge Police Department. We have a letter in the paper, um, from the Palmer. Okay, she's been, uh, hot time for eighteen years. She really, she's finding it difficult to dedicate the time to Sturbridge now. Okay, does somebody want to make a motion on the resignation?
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation.
Okay. Mary, how do you vote?
Yes, with regret.
Okay, Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ace, how do you vote?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Okay, next we have resignation of Todd Miller from the Economic Development and Tourism Co., as Economic Development and Tourism Coordinator effective August tenth due to health issues.
Yes, Madam.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the resignation of Todd Miller. I'll second.
Second. Mary, how do you vote?
Yes, with regret.
Hey, Mike, how do you vote?
Yes, Mike.
Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chase, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next we have the consideration possible action on an agreement with Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the acceptance of a hundred fifty thousand dollar Mass Trails grant to the Grand Trunk Trail Westfield section. Jeff, you want to give a word on it quickly?
Actually, if you don't mind, I'll turn this item over to Mr. Chamberlain of the Trails Committee, who can speak more eloquently about trails than I ever possibly could.
I'll bite, I'll bite my tongue on that one. Eloquent and time are two different things.
How about in detail? How about in greater detail than I ever could?
Mary and Tom.
Thank, thank you, Jeff, members of the board. Um, so, uh, as you know, this relates to the three-quarter mile section of the trail that we want to build from the Ed Calcutt Bridge out to the intersection of River and Blackwater Roads. Uh, the original funding was provided by a grant application through the federal government back in two thousand and five, and the grant funds, because of the method of funding, was given to Mass Highway. Uh, Mass Highway and the town proceeded, uh, in around two thousand and ten to, uh, get to a twenty-five percent design stage, uh, of planning and development. And at that time, Mass Highway decided that they did not want to construct the trail, that they, as an agency, they had other priorities, and, uh, working with the town tried to find a different agency to take over the project that would be approved by the Federal Highway Administration. And lo and behold, in two thousand and sixteen, they finally identified, uh, the federal agency called the Eastern Federal Lands Highway Division. Uh, it's a part of the National Park Service. Uh, they're the engineering, uh, agency for the National Park Service. Uh, they agreed to take on this project, and, uh, in two thousand and eighteen, a memorandum of agreement was finally, is signed by, uh, the Eastern Federal Lands, Mass Highway, and the Town of Sturbridge to move the project forward. Obviously, the funding that the town received back in two thousand and five, uh, was obviously based on trail construction at that time, and the costs have risen, and, uh, included in the cost today are the overhead costs that we now need to capture, uh, of the Eastern Federal Lands Highway Division, folks. So lo and behold, through the Mass Trails, we've been applying, uh, we applied for a grant to kind of offset those additional costs, uh, and the Mass Trails program funded this hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help cover the cost of engineering design and permitting. This is a one-year grant. It expires on June thirtieth of next year, so the clock is already ticking, uh, and it's only four items that are, uh, costed out after, uh, your hopeful positive action tonight and the state signing. So right now, I'm looking at, uh, the cost being covered by this grant effective on or about first of September, uh, once, uh, you know, this is approved here, and then it needs to go back to the state for their final approval, which I anticipate to be routine, but it's the process that we need to go for. So this hundred and fifty thousand just, uh, augments the funds we already have. Uh, the preliminary, you know, budget, uh, we were going to be short approximately three hundred thousand, so this covers at least half of that projected shortage, uh, but that budgetary figure is subject to revisions because it was all based on the twenty-five percent design plan. So, uh, we're hoping to have a better budget figure for the total project, uh, probably sometime right after the first of the year. And then we'll, can proceed from there on the rest of the project and decide how we want to go.
Okay, any questions from the board?
How long will that be on the Grand Trunk by Westville? Tom?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mary, I didn't get the whole question.
Once we're, I know we're going to be, we basically got half, and no better in January, but what kind of, um, how far are we across, folks, with the trail extension?
Uh, it's three-quarters of a mile, uh, you know, my, plus or minus a few feet, but, you know, it's three-quarters of a mile. It picks up the trail from its current end, uh, at the westerly side of the Ed Calcutt Bridge, uh, and follows the rail bed, and then, uh, as the rail bed, you know, the old rail bed goes behind people's houses, it drops back onto the Army Corps of Engineers' land, and then loops up onto a parcel the town acquired, uh, for back tack payment, loan payment of taxes, uh, that has frontage on, uh, Blackwater Road. And so it's, you know, we've acquired all of the properties. Uh, right now, it's, you know, we're obviously undergoing, uh, because the last time we looked at all of that stuff was back in two thousand and twelve, wetlands needed to be re-flagged, surveys needed to be retaken, uh, you know, cultural surveys need to be redone, uh, because of the time lag. So, uh, that's the other thing that's adding to some of the cost, uh, in this. But, uh, you know, the, the good news is we got the hundred and fifty thousand, which is, which is a good chunk, uh, you know, and is going to just allow that much more money that is available in the grant to be used for the construction cost, so.
That's awesome. How far the bridge is? Does, does the trail go straight, or is, is it, or do you cross over the bridge and then the trail extends from there?
You cross over the bridge and the trail extends from there. So it, it picks up right at the westerly side, which would be like the river roadside of, of the Ed Calcutt Bridge. I don't know if that helps, Mary.
It does. Thanks for the.
So it, it was, you know, right now, the trail kind of ends in the middle of the woods right there, uh, so it at least brings it out to a road, uh, intersection, and, uh, you know, so that alone will be a big plus, uh, you know, uh, for, for better usability of that trail.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Mike, you had had your hand up?
Yeah, uh, Tom, uh, if this, well, this, this will go ahead, but who, who is going to actually, uh, put this out, advertise this for bids? Is it Eastern Federal Land, or is it the town, or who?
It's, the whole project is being administered by the Eastern Federal Lands, folks. Uh, so they will be putting it out, uh, to bid based on their appropriate bidding, you know, procedures and policies and, and federal laws and rules, uh, et cetera.
Do you, do you anticipate, uh, bidding next year?
Yes, we do. Uh, we, uh, the budget, the, uh, project timeline right now calls for a ninety percent, I'm sorry, a seventy percent review, uh, sometime late winter, very early spring, uh, with, uh, final, uh, contract documents ready to go out to bid, uh, sometime around the June timeframe, June to July, and so, uh, about a year from now, we should be, at least be out to bid, uh, or may already have the bids back and, and under review for award sometime in the fall of next year, September, very early October next year for construction.
Thank you for hanging in with this project. I was going to say for over fifteen years, but it's probably closer to twenty years you've been working on this. Thank you.
Well, we, we initially started the Grand Trunk Trail project in two, uh, right on two, in two thousand. Uh, that first section in Westville got started with Volunteer Day to cut some brush and, and kind of clear the, the original cap, so, yeah. It's, uh, twenty, twenty years, and, and it's still going.
And it's still going.
Well, anything else? I'm sorry, Mary. I just want to say with COVID, I think our trails are being used so much, and there are so many more people at Westville, so some good has come of it. Um, at least we have that recreation available to us.
Uh, believe it or not, Mary, with the three traffic counters we have in place now, uh, you know, month of July dropped off because I think people are just going other places finally in the summer, uh, but in May and June, we were experiencing just by those three counters, uh, well over seven thousand clicks are people going by the counters. So, yeah, they were busy, absolutely.
Chris?
I just wanted to note that we just finished paving Blackwater Road, and we left off at the last driveway on the left, and that's where Tommy's trail is going to be coming out, so we left that because that's going to be redone during the reconstruction of the trail.
Okay, anything else on this? Someone willing then to make a motion for the grant?
Oh, yeah. This is Mike, and I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, trail grant.
Mary, I'll second it.
Okay, Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yes, Mike.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
Ace?
Yes, Chase.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you. Coming in, Tom.
I think I'm going to hang around for the next item.
Next one? Okay.
If you don't mind, Mary.
Oh, I don't mind at all, Tom. This is consideration impossible action on the challenge partnership agreement between the Department of the Army and Town of Sturbridge for the construction of a portion of the Grand Trunk Railroad. Okay, Tommy, want to explain that one?
So, uh, the Corps of Engineers has a process called this Challenge Partnership Agreement that, that it's their national process of allowing partners to do work on their property. Uh, and in the past, the town has entered in these partnership agreements, uh, for construction of what is now existing, the trail at Westville, and also a quarter-mile section, uh, in the Fistail section of town to the East Brimfield Lake. Uh, so this basically is the way of formalizing the agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers that we can enter onto their property and construct the, this, uh, west, this last section of the Grand Trunk Trail, uh, that we just talked about, uh, with the hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. Uh, approximately, of the three-quarters of a mile, approximately two-thirds of that distance is actually on Army federal property as part of the Westville Flood Control Project. So this document is needed, and the, the figures and everything in the document just reflect, uh, the best numbers that we have based on the value of the work we're going to do on their property. So it doesn't, those cost numbers do not include the other parts of the project that are not on the core property. But this is their standard document. This would be, uh, if you agree to it, this will be the third Challenge Partnership Agreement we've worked with, with the Army Corps of Engineers.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Any questions from the board? Is someone willing to make a motion then?
This is Mike, and I'll make a motion to approve the challenge, uh, partnership agreement between the Department of the Army and the Town of Sturbridge for the construction of a shared-use path along the Westville Recreation Area.
I'm Mary, and I'll second that motion.
Okay, Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ace, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, again, thank you, Tom. Okay, again, thank you, Tom.
Thank you, everyone, good night.
Good night, Tom. Okay, next we have Consideration and Possible Action on a Contract for Commissioning Services for Rooftop Units 1 and 2 at the Public Safety Facility. And I believe Robin's here.
Yes, hi, everyone, good evening. Um, good evening. So at the January, uh, special town meeting earlier this year, money was appropriated to replace Rooftop Unit Number 2, um, on the safety complex. Rooftop Unit Number 1 was done last summer on the safety complex. Both of these units provide the air conditioning for the building. Um, our bid for both units actually had come in lower than the budgeted amount. So in coordination with Rooftop Project Number 1, I'm proposing to bring in a third-party commissioning agent to commission the rooftop units, and we will do both Number 1 and, uh, Number 2 at the same time, as well as the units that are spaced and ceilinged throughout the Public Safety Complex. Um, I think that will be the first time that this building has ever been commissioned since it was opened in 1989. Uh, and this will also give us the ability to have engineering oversight, um, on the contractor while they are providing us with the middles and, uh, and testing and balancing for the new unit.
Okay, thank you, Robin. Any questions from the board? Mary?
Um, fantastic, Robin. How much lower did it come in than what was appropriated? Just roughly, I'm curious.
Um, I think we have about $20,000 left for Rooftop Unit Number 2, and the proposal, um, that we have would use, uh, $4,500 for commissioning of that, of that remaining $20,000. I believe there's, um, I believe there's about $5,000 left in Rooftop Unit Number 1, which will cover the $22.50, um, for Rooftop Unit Number 1.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Someone wanna make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with C-3 Consulting for Commissioned Services for Public Safety Facility Rooftop HVAC Units for a price not to exceed $9,000.
I'll second the motion.
Hey, Mary, how do you vote? Mary, yes. Mike?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Robin, are you sticking around for?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sticking around today. So just, you can go in order, I'm, I'm off that.
Okay. Okay, next we have Consideration and Possible Action on the lease of an officer trailer for the school bus drivers for one year to be located at the Department of Public Works Facility. Um, Butch, you still there?
Butch?
Case?
While we're waiting for Butch to come back on, I'm gonna share my screen, and it's a map of the location.
Butch is there. Butch is there now. Butch, we're talking about the, uh, trailer?
We're talking about the?
Want to fill us in on it?
Yes, well, we have, um, 20 bus drivers or more, and we have a couple people in the office down there. And we're, the guys were just a little bit nervous about bringing in all those people to the garage. Right now, we have a very small group there, like 15, 18 of us. We manage to keep away from each other. Uh, we have our masks and one person per truck unless you're masked, and we have a kind of good routine going on. A little bit concerned about bringing in all those people, especially with all the buses and all the children and all the exposure. So we thought we'd like to keep them separated. So the best way to do that, we thought without, and keep them on the property, was to get a, uh, it's like a double-wide trailer, which will have a men's room and a ladies' room, have a little lunch room, and a couple offices, so that they can, you know, heating and air conditioning. So be very comfortable, but not, I don't, I don't want them to think we're throwing them out. We're just trying to keep some separation in the groups during this pandemic.
Okay, thank you, Butch. Any questions from the board? Mary?
Uh, I think it's a great idea, and I can appreciate that you do wanna, you know, minimize the amount of people that go beyond your little hub there. Uh, is this, can we use COVID money for this?
Yes, and that's in the, in the memo, the COVID care funds can pay for this.
Awesome, I'm sorry, I didn't look at it. Thank you.
Okay, Jeff?
Just a couple of other points. Um, the trailer cost is about 40, $47,000 for a lease for one year. And then there's $15,000 to $20,000 of additional costs to get power, water, sewer, um, phone and internet to the trailer. So in addition to the, to the 45, 43, we'd probably ask for an additional allocation from the CARES Act Fund of about $20,000 for setup. And then one other?
Sounds good, Case?
Have you guys looked into buy, how much it would be to buy a trailer like this?
Yes, I looked at a lot of places, and apparently we're not the only people doing this. So availability is really down. I would have to wait like three, four months to get a trailer to buy it. Um, this one here, um, it's a, it's a lease. We could maybe buy it at the end of the lease, but I'm not really sure. Right now, they're not even offering that because they have so much demand for rentals. But, uh, yeah, I looked into both, and, uh, it was cheaper to rent it for a year than to buy it, but obviously we'd probably be better off buying it. But I can't get it for, you know, three months or more. And the school opens in like four weeks. And this, this I can get set up within that time period.
Okay.
Hey, Jeff?
Just a couple other points. Uh, if you look at your screen, the, 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 um, trailer's gonna be here in relation to the, to the DPW garage. Uh, the one downside to this location, there's a relatively well-formed tree that has to come down. And I'll pull up a Google Earth image, you can see it. It's this tree right here. But that's the best location for water and sewer and power on the site. So we'd lose a tree, um, but once the trailer's gone, we'd replace it. But that's kind of the negative of the site.
Yeah, but if it's necessary, it's necessary. Any questions, comments from the board? Someone wanna make a motion then?
I'll authorize the leasing of the trailer from Willstock for a year at a cost of $45,434.92, plus insurance and additional expenses for utility connections to be paid for by the CARES Act COVID-19 Fund.
Mike, second.
Second. Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Case, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, Butch.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, next we have Consideration and Possible Action for Survey for 70 Cedar Street. Beth, you wanna do this, or Robin?
I'll, I'll start it, and Robin can give some detail. Um, as you know, with the Senior Center Study, uh, 70 Cedar Street is one of the potential locations, and there's been, uh, a lot of review of that property. But we also came back to the board initially and said we weren't gonna do the full s- survey until we came back to the board if the site was feasible. Now, we don't know, we're still working through that process. However, uh, Robin is asking to go ahead and survey 70 Cedar Street because we've, we're utilizing a portion of that property for the multi-use field that's on 60, and we've, we're finding some things on 70 that may or may not be, you know, memorialized on any plan. We found a bunch of trails. Uh, we really don't know where the utilities are or some other things. So Robin's going ahead and asking for us to go ahead and do the survey. Now, the original survey was to be done by BHNA, which is the contractor or the consultant doing the, uh, Senior Center Study. But Robin did a, a solicitation of quotes and found one, found a company to do it at a much less expensive cost. And that's where I'll let Robin take over.
Hey, Robin?
Hi, yes, um, so, um, Control Point Associates, which was the surveyor that BHNA, the architect for the Senior Center, proposed, provided us with a quote price of $19,000. Um, since McClure Engineering, um, has been awarded the engineering design for the 60 Cedar Street field, um, I have asked them for a quote as well, um, because they would be the ones who would need the topo. Um, and they gave us a price of $10,550. Um, at the time I wrote the memo to the board, Levesque Geomatics, who actually surveyed 60 for McClure, so all three of these, these, uh, surveyors are involved in the site in some way, shape or form, um, Levesque provided us a quote of $7,500. At the time that I proposed to the board, um, to authorize McClure Engineering for the $10,550, I had not heard back from Levesque Engineering by the deadline I had given them. Um, so I will leave it to the board tonight if we would like to go ahead with McClure or Levesque. I think both, um, are highly qualified. And, uh, he did clarify that his proposal for $7,500, uh, includes everything, so. Either, either of those lower prices would, uh, accomplish what we need to accomplish for no matter what we use the site for. And we would also only survey directly, and I wouldn't have to worry about, um, finding it again.
I have a question.
Please, Robin. Questions, Mary?
Thank you, Robin. It was quite a bit less. Levesque is what, um, is the surveyor for 60?
Yes.
That's what he's using? I mean, that would be, I, I think that one makes even more sense just because, um, it would be able to, you know, there might be information of 60 that's used for 70. You don't have to worry about the two surveyors talking to each other for all the same one. I don't know, that just makes sense to me. And, and the, the surveying of 70 would be useful regardless of whether the land ultimately becomes a senior center for additional recreational fields, is that right?
Uh, yes, whatever its future holds for it, we will have the survey. And one of the things that I have been doing, um, now that we've started getting registered surveys, is making sure that, um, Anne has a copy in the assessor's office so that as our new properties or other facilities come, come on board or projects come into question, we make sure that we have, uh, a full electronic copy of all surveys, um, so there's no question in the future.
Awesome, thank you, Robin. Good work.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I have a, a question about, uh, what is, if, if we accept McClure's proposal, are we designating McClure Engineering as a special municipal employee? And why would that be? In the proposal, it grants them special municipal employee status.
Um, I'll, I'll speak to this a little bit from my previous, uh, employment as an architect. Uh, the state definition of a special municipal employee in, uh, from my interpretation and, and training, uh, through MCPPO, does sometimes apply to architects and engineers who are hired. Um, and mostly it's the part, uh, the things that are important about it, from what I understood from the training from the state, was things about taking, um, drives and, and the ethics and the, and the parts of it. So, not special municipal employee designation is, is about being, uh, ethically and morally responsible as a, a consultant to a town or a municipality.
Usually it would be if they're, if one of the principals of the firm were, uh, say, a pu, a paid, uh, municipal employee by the town, or paid by the Town of Sturbridge as a municipal employee, then we would have to designate the whole firm as a special municipal employee. Uh, I don't understand. I, I, I don't know. But I just want to clarify, if we accept this proposal, we're designating them as a, the, the whole firm as a special municipal employee.
Okay, Jeff?
We can follow up on that, Mike, but at this point, Levesque's, uh, proposal is clarified for Robin, so we can go with Levesque for less money.
Oh. I thought, oh, I thought she was saying McClure was the?
Yeah, we, when she wrote the memo, uh, we didn't get the answers back from Levesque in time, but she talked to him today, so she's got it all worked up.
Okay, so we can go?
But I'll get an answer on the special municipal employee, uh, issue with McClure for you all.
Okay. Cause they'll be doing the other one. Okay.
Is anyone else? Does somebody want to make a motion then?
I suppose the, uh, the requested, the, uh, motion should be to, uh, and I make a motion to authorize the survey for 70 Cedar Street and accept the proposal of Levesque. Uh, surveyors? That's what the recommendation is.
Please.
We, Levesque Geometrics, Geomatics, Inc. That's my mom. I should guess I should, and the amount?
$7,500.
$3,500. Okay. $3,500.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll second it, Mary.
Okay, Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Case, how do you vote?
Case, yes.
And I vote yes. Case, thank you, Robin. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Consideration and Possible Action on the Election Workers for the Primary and General Elections. Okay, everybody has their list there? Any, any questions?
I know Lynn's on the phone, if you have any questions.
Um, thank you very much, so, for the, um, date on the date, guideline.
Sorry, what was that, Mary?
Um, thank you for the guy, the guy, the date. This catch?
Welcome.
Somebody wanna make a motion then?
I'll make a motion, this is Mike, to approve the election workers for the upcoming primary and general elections.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Chase, how do you vote?
Yes, Chase.
Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ike, how do you vote?
Mike, yes.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next we have a request. Says approve warrant. We actually need to, uh, hope to approve the warrant and sign the warrant for the primary election. Anyone have a question on that? Anyone wanna make that motion?
This is Mike, and I'll make a motion to approve the warrant for the primary election.
And sign, we have to sign.
Approve and sign.
You're a second?
Second, Chase.
Okay, Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Ike?
Mike, yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Chase? I vote yes. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening, everyone.
Yes, you too.
Good night.
Okay, next we have old business. We've already done the discussion to upgrade the water meters, so we have an update on COVID-19. Jeff?
Yes, thank you. We are, as we get closer to the end of August, we are gonna exhaust our supply of doorkeepers. So we're gonna look at new ways to record who coming, comes and goes in the buildings. So we'll be working on that over the next couple of weeks. Whether or not we reduce hours again to keep that manageable, we'll have to evaluate. But right now, with the doorkeepers, we can enforce masks, we can keep control in the hallways, and control meeting only having one person at a window at a time to limit the number of people in the hallway. So we'll have to see how we can do that with, without a doorkeeper, because we've used up the CERT team, we've used the senior workers. So without hiring a bunch of people, we may move to, as you walk up to an office, you record your, each office records who they did business with at that time, and those sheets are kept for the tracking purposes. And then we would still do the cleaning, still do the, the other things that we've put in place for COVID. So we're working through that over the next couple of weeks. Also in the packet, I gave you what the Board of Education has sent us regarding their plans to reopen, both the elementary school and the high school and the middle schools. So I know there's been some conversation in the community about those plans, but we gave it to you for you to read and be aware of what's going on out there, so. That's what I had for COVID.
Okay, any questions, comments? Ike?
Yeah, I'd just like to say how disappointed I am that our school decided to go against the governor's recommendation of opening the school full-time. I feel as us as a board, we tried to follow the governor's, you know, step by step, I feel like we've always went with his recommendation. And I feel like it's real unfortunate as a town that we're going against his recommendation. I wrote an email as a resident of this town with my wife and a parent of two young boys. I think we spent a lot of money, $40,000 on a piece of equipment to clean buses, we just passed $46,000 for a trip to DPW. I just feel like it's a lot of money for every other week, and I'm just disappointed.
Okay, Chase, did you send that also to the superintendent and the principal?
I believe it went to the principal, but not the superintendent.
Okay, that's probably, probably ought to forward it to that, because as you know, it's not within our realm, strictly the school department.
Oh, absolutely. No, and I'm not looking to make policy for the school. That's, that's not certainly not what my intention was. But, you know, we've talked a lot about how this is gonna affect small businesses and things like that. Well, let me tell you guys, families in this town, this is really gonna affect. When they have to tell their boss that they only work every other week and whatnot, because they gotta educate their kids, it's gonna be very difficult, and I think we need to keep them in mind moving forward as well.
Okay. Anything else on?
Okay, Mary? I just wanted to go back to the doorkeepers, because I think that was an excellent plan that you've had, and I know that you've exhausted CERT and the seniors. I didn't know if it would be useful to put up on the website an opportunity for regular residents, not regular residents, but the others who volunteer that. I mean, I think there might be some willingness to, for others to volunteer in that role. And I will talk to you, I'm willing to volunteer a few hours every week to do it. I think it's a great safety precaution, they take the names down, so then you can engage in contact tracing if you have to. So I don't know, I don't know what kind of response you'd get, but, you know, or maybe members of committees might be willing to rotate and do one day a week for a month, and then another on table, I don't know. I don't know, maybe I'm too optimistic about volunteerism.
Jeff?
We can do that, and we've been paying people, so, I mean, it's a minimum wage gig if you wanna, if you wanna do it. And we can put that out there if there are people interested, we can recruit. We just didn't know if that's something we wanted to do, or go to what other towns have done, which is the, you know, the reporting at each window. So we can go ahead and put that out there, that will recruit some doorkeepers and see what happens.
I don't know how the rest of the board goes, but I think that's a pretty good gig for somebody that's unemployed or, you know. Anyway, I thought some of it was volunteerism. I'm willing to do some volunteering, but I don't know how other people feel about the doorkeeper approach.
It has been successful.
I think to Chase, why, and, go ahead, Jeff?
No, I'm just saying it has been successful. That's all.
I was gonna say, as a paid position, you know, Chase had kinda talked about there's gonna be people who are gonna be out of a job because of schools. It may be an opportunity for people to work every other week and offset some of that lost income. You can see with that?
Sure. Okay. We'll get into it in the morning.
Okay, does anybody have any other old business? Mm-hmm?
I just...
Oh, I can't, I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any old, any other old business?
Oh, no.
Okay, Mike?
No, I don't have any old business.
Next question.
Mary?
Just because people keep asking, and what is the latest on the library's progress in terms of opening?
Robin, do you know where they are with opening the library?
Uh, yes. Last Tuesday, the library opened for limited browsing in the main floor. So they have a table set up outside, and they are tracking the first people who come in. And they go around the main floor, there's a certain path they must follow to come in, check the new books out. They have availability to browse the new book collection and check those out. And they've had, looks like they've had continuing success with that, as well as continuing success with the curb side. The computer tent has also been moved to the meeting room level, so those who need internet access and computer, there's availability during the week, they can access the library from the rear door on the side of the common to come in and use computers.
That's fantastic. I'm sorry, I actually didn't know that it reopened. I checked, people inquire, so maybe something on our website saying that the library is now open, because it hasn't really been publicized too much that it's, I knew the curb side was there, but I didn't realize that it's open to go inside, so maybe we can just put something on our website, letting people know.
Okay, that can be done. I know the library also posted on Facebook.
Okay, I'm not on Facebook.
Okay. Okay, any other old business, Mary?
Um, not old.
People make me nervous about new. Chase, any old?
Oh, no.
I have no old.
And I have no old. So, under new business, you have, is Ian?
Um, yeah, I'm not sure if it's the right forum to bring it up, but I was curious about in-person meetings for the board, and if we're ever gonna get back to meeting in person. We're expecting our teachers and our students to go back into a building. I think it sends a mixed message when we're all sitting in different places and we're not coming together to meet, talk about the issues. I'm just curious where we're at with that. I think this is obviously difficult, there's technology issues and other things that go on, and it would be good to get back in person. Well, in person.
Yeah, that is old business, Ian, and you have brought it up before.
Okay.
Jeff, show input on it.
Um, I, I don't have any qualms about it. The, the magic to it is going to be, the board can come together in one room, but there's no way to limit the public. So the public would still have to access digitally, by remote, call in, watch the video, those kind of things. So finding a way to merge those two, those two things is, is really the magic. And if we have a board of selectmen member, and I don't know this in any way, shape or form, who feels uncomfortable being in a public setting, they would still participate virtually. So trying to wrap all that together into a public meeting that provides public access and the ability to, to talk to the public and their ability to talk to the board, it's just logistics, it's not rocket science, we just have to figure it out.
Well, I know a few members of the board have expressed the desire to get back, even having the public, does the public allow, as long as we keep the numbers down?
Well, how do you do that, though? If you have a public hearing and 50 people want to come in the building, you really can't say, okay, only 10 of you can come in, right? So you've, you still have to understand that the public environment still has to be engaged digitally or remotely, because you can't limit the number of people you invite into a public meeting.
Right. But on a, on a public hearing, but public meeting, we don't normally get 25 people, 50 people, unless it's a real hot potato issue. But I for one would like to see you work out the logistics of how we could do it, because really, it is much more, I think, productive for the selectmen to be in the same room, there's better interaction.
Mm-hmm.
The sound works better and everything. Chase, how do you feel?
Oh, I'm itching to get back. I'm ready to go.
That's fine.
Ike, how do you feel?
The board that I work for, they've been meeting for a month and a half, maybe two months in person. They do, when there's more than 10 people in the room, everybody wears a mask, and, but there's, we've got the room laid out, so there's like, you know, over three meters distance between any member. We have to really spread everything out, but it can work in person, and the board I work for wanted it in person, so we, we made an arrangement. The, the problem does arise. We had a, a meeting the other night, and there were some people that were in an extended room, they could hear everything that was going on, but they had to, you know, be, keep social distance as well. So it, it can be a problem, you know, a little problematic when you get more than, you know, the capacity of the room.
Mary, how do you feel?
Yeah, I'm of, I can appreciate what Ian is saying, but I don't think we're giving a mixed message in that, you know, we don't have any jurisdiction over the school. So, but we, and we're not requiring other committees to meet. And I believe that if people did have concerns because of a medical condition or whatever, that even students are allowed to go 100% virtual if they want, they're not required to go back. And I think teachers, if they have a medical condition too, so I don't want to get into that. I'm, I'm very happy to meet in person. I think that we do need, obviously, to be six feet apart, and now the governor has reduced inside gatherings to 25 from, actually, that's outside, 20, it was 15, it's 25. I think it's four, I thought it was still 10, I thought he rolled it back to 10. So I don't know, I mean, I think it's gonna be important that everybody does wear a mask if they're not talking, including the public. That's getting required in all places of worship, and I don't see why our meeting should really be any different. And I think mask wearing is being encouraged, particularly when you're indoors. So I'd love to meet in person, but I do think strict COVID requirements should be in place. And I don't think other committees, some of which are larger than ours, should be required to go, you know, it has to be an all or nothing thing. I think it's a lot to ask volunteers of the larger boards to meet in small conference rooms. Some of them get together in the smaller rooms, I mean, we have a big room, they don't. The planning board is pretty large, so I think we need to like, come up with some kind of policy with respect to other boards, whether they stay remote or not. Again, I, I think it's a lot to ask volunteers to start going to meetings in small conference rooms. I, I would not, I know, I think it's the CPC that meets in the smallest conferences, doesn't it, while we're having our meetings? And I just can't see that, you know, unless they can meet in the room that we're meeting. I would not require that of volunteers right now, not with the uptick and not going into the fall. But again, board of selectmen, if we all wear a mask and we're six feet apart, and everybody in the public wears one, then I, I think that's fine. And you're not, you're not just looking out for yourself, I mean, some of you may be even more careful than I am, and we're all coming from different hubs, in terms of who we communicate with. So members of the board are older, so they're in a higher risk group anyway. So I just want to make sure we have a lot of protocol in place, because I, I wouldn't want to bring anything to the board.
Oh, Mary, I think we were basically just talking about our board to begin with, and I think, you know, Jeff can go ahead and find out what's required in the logistics of it. Because right away, like, planning board...
Okay, because there's other boards do that deal with...
With seven members, and the town planner, and the assistant there, you know, that's already up to 11, but, you know, just as far as the board of selectmen goes. So Jeff, can you move forward on that?
Okay.
If I may?
Yep.
Yeah, let me take a look at this. And Mary Blanchard, you've seen, and Chase, you've seen the, the shape the board of selectmen chambers in. Because of the need to have the public access, it's kind of, kind of crosswired all over the place right now? So if we're gonna continue some form of remote meeting, we've got to work out how we're gonna keep the technology in place and still allow the board to sit. And then if other boards and commissions want to go live, they're gonna be, have to be at town hall, because that's where the public access digitally is. So we just need to think about this a little bit. We'll get there, just, we gotta think about it a little bit, how to make sure that the room is safe for people to wander around in, because there's cable spread all over the place right now. And how do we, for boards that want to meet in person, and boards that still want to meet remote, we still got to keep those capabilities alive, so we've just got to kind of figure that out.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure following regulations, something can happen, and I'm sure as far as we're just with Robin, all she does, she'll something. So I guess where it is to focus on it.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay?
Mm-hmm. If not by the first meeting in, if not by the first meeting in September, the second meeting in September, we'll have it worked out.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, next, on your new, on your new business, um... Okay. Next, on your new, on your new business, um, Ian Murphy, our principal assessor is here, and you have a couple of things, Ian, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay. The first one is the preliminary, preliminary tax billing. Do you want to explain that quickly?
Sure. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, when we first, uh, ended up working from home, I started thinking about, I started thinking ahead and, um, looked into the IGRs requiring semi-annual communities, um, the option of issuing preliminary bills. And there's very strict guidelines on that. And the eligibility to get authorization to issue the preliminary bills is, um, if we have, if we can demonstrate the existence of a valuation-related delay in setting the fiscal '21 tax rate. And we have already had our values certified, so we don't have a valuation-related delay. So I reached out to DOR, I spoke with Joanne Graziano, and I spoke with Anthony Rosasus to try to get some confirmation on if we, if we have a delay on setting the tax rate, can we issue the preliminary bills? Um, and I was told we wouldn't qualify for it because it's not a valuation-related delay. But we were recommended to have the board of assessors take the vote, which by the IGR's requirements, they would have had to take the vote by August 15. And it's just a vote to request for authorization to issue preliminary bills, but it doesn't obligate us to issue preliminary bills. And the reason they recommended we take the vote was in the case that they changed the rule or the eligibility requirement and allows it for a community who has their values certified, but there's another reason for a delay for setting the tax rate. So that's the reason why the board took the vote. It's it's like a contingency plan. It's just a backup, just to have it there in place in case we need to do it. We're pretty optimistic that we're not going to be able to do it. After speaking with Anthony Rosasus, myself and Barbara Berry had a long conversation with him. We told him where the town of Sturbridge was at, um, that we had our town meeting, that we set our budget, that our values are certified, our new growth just got certified. Um, you know, we're moving along the same way we always do every year. The pickup, I guess, is if the state doesn't set their budget, then some of the figures that we're using to set our tax rates are, uh, either last year's figures or kind of a guesstimated or a combination of both. But after speaking with Mr. Rosasus, he said that was going to be fine. He looked at our situation and he felt that Sturbridge probably will not have a problem getting their tax rate set. So this is just really a plan B to just have in place. And according to the IGRs, they had, the assessors had to vote by August 15. And when they vote, they have to notify the board of selectmen that they did vote. And all it was, was a vote to request authorization. It's not actually going through with the request. It's just kind of having it there as a benchmark. Um, just keeping our options open and keeping us protected, really. But at this point, we don't qualify. So it's only if they change the rules on the eligibility and if the need arose for us to have to go to preliminary bills, which we really hope we don't have to, um, just there in place. So that's kind of that in a nutshell.
Okay. Thank you on that one, Ian. Any questions, comments from the board? Okay, now your next letter is, there's a vacancy now on the board of assessors?
Yes. Uh, De'Ami Hen, she moved. So she's no longer a resident of Sturbridge. So she gave us her resignation. Um, we had, um, kind of tried to look around, um, couldn't find anybody. So now we're notifying the board within the month that she gave it to us. The opening is there? If you guys come up with someone or find someone, you know?
Is is that actually a process part? Because it's an elected board, it has to be advertised.
Oh, okay.
And and then there has to be a joint meeting between the board of selectmen and the remainder members of the board of assessors. And at that time, we would vote for someone. And that vote would only be active until the next town election.
Okay.
And, um, that person or somebody else could run for the fulfillment of the term. Do you know when her term expired?
Uh, I believe she had just got reelected last, so she was a year into her term, I believe. So she'd have, what, two years left?
Yeah.
I believe, yeah.
Yeah, but that's how the process works. So Jeff, will you be able to advertise for the position?
Yes. And I have a...
We don't have to have...
Go ahead, Ian. I'm sorry.
So we don't have to have that joint meeting until you actually have someone to appoint?
Applicant, right.
Okay.
Yeah, because we did that, I'm trying to think.
School committee.
You did that, school committee, yeah.
Well, we've done it with, yeah, but we've done it with, um, the assessor one, because I remember Paul Murphy coming in.
Yeah, I think we might have done it when when Sophia got on the board.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's who it was. But but that's the process for elected.
Okay.
Okay? So you don't have to strain your neck. We'll advertise and we'll be coming out of the woodwork.
Oh, I'm sure they will.
I just have a comment on that.
Okay, now your, yes, Jeff?
So I I reached out to KP about the, how to fill a vacancy because our charter was kind of silent on that. So, you know, basically, you find somebody, the boards meet, and then they appoint. But the person would only fill the position till the spring of 2021. And then they would...
Yeah, the next election.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
And then whoever would run then would just be running to fill the rest of the term.
Right.
Probably would just be another year. Yeah.
Okay.
No, it's not in the charter. It's a state statute.
Right.
Okay, now your next letter is requesting a setting of a hearing on the classification of values. And, um, you had asked for September 8, but we're not meeting, and you feel fine with September 9th at 6:45?
Yes, my board is fine with September 9.
Okay. So would somebody like to make a motion? Does that affect setting the classification hearing for Wednesday, September 9, 2020 at 6:45?
Yeah. Now, this is Mike and, uh, ooh, it's Mary tying.
So moved. I just said so moved with what grade that, September 8, the classification hearing.
Okay, any discussions? Dave, how do you vote?
Yes, good.
Mike?
Yes.
Siri? Ian, how do you vote, Ian? Said yes, but trouble with technology. Can I vote yes? Okay, thank you, Ian.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Yes, you too.
Take care.
Okay, any other new business?
Ian, yes. I have no new.
Okay, Mary?
Um, yeah, a resident had contacted me about, um, the co, um, the senior, uh, the development that may be going in in the back of hills for senior, um, living. I'm trying to think of a proper term. Sorry, I'm getting tired. Um, and, um, what kind of, um, town services they were getting. And, um, it was my understanding that she indicated that the flow would go to Southbridge, um, but that the planning board had contemplating a a pump station to keep, um, the sewer here and that there would be more sewer hookups for, um, on our wastewater treatment plant. And I I don't know, is is that something that's going to come before the board because we are, um, the sewer commissioners, those types of decisions? Um, or am I getting ahead of things? So I just like a little background there. Thanks, Jeff. Hey, Jeff?
Yeah, we, uh, you probably know this better than I do, but we have an agreement with, uh, Southbridge for certain, uh, capacity, uh, in the fiscal area. And, uh, right now we're maxing that capacity out. Um, so this, this area, we still, we're still working with their engineers on where this, where this is going to go. We would prefer it to come to Sturbridge and treat it in Sturbridge. Um, but it's still an engineering question rather than a political one at this point. But we've told them our preference is it, particularly wa, you know, water and sewer, we would want to provide both.
Okay, fantastic. So I was just going to say that does sound like a public policy matter, and I am on the same page as you are. I mean, to the extent that we can keep sewer here, because I know when we enlarged our wastewater treatment plant, I was on a finance committee at the time, and there was concern that we were becoming dependent on Southbridge. And we had some complaints with them when they changed the rate a number of years ago. Um, and I think perhaps the lawsuit, I don't recall anymore. But the whole idea was to try to get less reliant on Southbridge, not more reliant. So I didn't know how other staff felt about it. But I do think that those kind of questions, like if it's a matter of costing more money to the developer or whatever, as the sewer commissioners, I think that is a public policy decision where the sewer goes. So I I think that we should at least get to weigh in on it. But I'm glad that, um, the desire is to keep it in Sturbridge if if at all possible.
Right, and that's still...
Again, I think that's something that we can have the conversation at selectman level as well.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else new, Mary?
No.
Mike?
No.
Ian?
No.
Okay, the only new thing I have, um, Jeff Mary Lou Volpe is retiring.
What's that?
Mary Lou Volpe, Volpe is retiring from the fire department.
I've, I've not seen that, but I've heard that. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Well, she's even said it. So, I mean, we haven't got, uh, official, but we do recognize employees after so many years. I'm not sure how many years she's been on the fire department, but could you check on that? Because there's, you know, recognition at a meeting, there's citation, and then if you really here 25 years, you get a plaque. So could you check on that? Because, um, she's supposedly retiring even, I believe, just before, right about when we have our next meeting.
Okay.
Oh, what a wonderful community. But God bless her. She has been here a long time, very devoted employee. I'm sad to hear.
Yeah, well, a prenuptial retirement.
I get it. I know, I know.
Yes?
Do we do the plaque? Don't we do the plaques at town meeting?
Yeah, but that's only if you have 25 years in, and I don't believe she's 25 years.
Okay. All right, I'll figure it out.
It's in our po, that's, well, it's in our policy book.
Okay.
Because we ran into a problem once. If somebody, sometimes after a couple of years on a committee, and somebody suggested they get a plaque, and they did, and then they joined another committee and stuff. So it's got to be 20 years.
All right, you got to earn it. You got to earn it. I hear you.
That's right.
Okay.
You got to earn it.
I have no other new business correspondence, Mike?
Yeah. Uh, oh, where did it go?
In the mail.
I had had it here a second ago. Oh, what page number was it again? Because I'm, I'm...
Uh, 272.
272, okay. Oh, that's where I went too far. Okay. Um, okay. And, uh, so the correspondence, July 31, 2020, we have corporate environmental advisors. They issued a status report on 122 to 130 Main Street. That's, uh, Route 131. Uh, and that's regarding a phase five, uh, remedial operation, uh, at that location. Uh, the second piece of, uh, correspondence was, uh, August 4, 2020, and it's, uh, Patrick Riordan.
Riordan.
Riordan, oh.
An Irish name.
Yes, Riordan. Right. And, uh, that's regarding, uh, Route 20 intersection. Uh, and, uh, it's a, it's a letter about the traffic light and, uh, recommendation for a solution to that traffic light at New Ba, requesting a, uh, traffic signal basically at New Boston Road and Route 20. Uh, the next piece of correspondence is from our friends at Charter Communications, dated August 11, 2020. And it's, uh, the the basic, uh, thing of that is that, uh, there are changes to the lineup again, uh, channel called Fusion. And there's, uh, a new, other new channels, Bulldog Shopping Network, Shop HQ Health, and so forth, the Kid Central on Spectrum. Uh, there's, there's a change to the lineup. Uh, apparently no changes in, in the cost, though. Uh, the, the next piece of, uh, uh, correspondence was also from Charter Communi, Communications. And, uh, it's a notice that beginning on around September 15, uh, through September 24, Spectrum Northeast LLC, uh, will launch the, uh, NBA TV, uh, on Spectrum TV Sports. So that's another lineup change. And then we also got a piece of correspondence from Jewel Environmental Corporation. Uh, and that's, uh, about Coett Road and Harding Lane. And, uh, the, uh, uh, there's a permanent, uh, solution to, uh, to a, uh, a problem at that, at that location. Says Coett Road and Harding, Harding Lane in Sturbridge. Um, that's, that again is, uh, a statement under the, um, the state, uh, environmental policy, uh, contingency plan. And lastly, we've got a letter from, uh, Tennessee Gas Corporation. And they're, um, they're talking about their 2020 tree plan. Uh, uh, and, uh, they're, they're, uh, it's about, uh, trees on, uh, Finley, Shattuck, and Farker Road, uh, that they, uh, that, uh, Tennessee Gas will be, uh, trimming, I guess. And, uh, that's the correspondence.
Hey, does anyone else have any theory?
Well, I just want to comment on the letter that we got from Mr. Riordan about the dangerous situation from New Boston Bridge. This isn't the first time residents have reached out. I mean, I understand that they are state roads, Route 20. Um, but I'd like to look into his suggestion a little bit more, which is simply that, um, it's, it's a left-hand turn through Boston. And then Route 20 East would have an easier time taking a left because when I go over there, I I think it's very dangerous myself crossing over Route 20 both ways. And I think we should, you know, um, I'm sure Jeff was going to do this anyway, but I think he, we should answer his letter and and let them know, let him know. I think he, we should answer his letter and, and let them know, let him know that he should also forward to the Mass DOT, and not just us, because, you know, they're in charge. But I think we looked into it years ago, didn't we, about a traffic light? And the state said, you know, they did a study, and it doesn't rise to the level of needing one, or, or something like that. I'd like to know, uh, anything with respect to making that road a little safer?
Yeah, Mary, we have a, a whole report on that that came in a couple of years ago from the state. I did send a-
I know.
Yeah, I did send a quick response to Mr. Riordan concerning that. And I do know that Jeff has been on top of it all along. So Jeff, do you want to explain?
Yes. Um, a couple of things. Um, short-term, before COVID, we were talking to DOT about that intersection. They actually brought it up to us about what could happen and what they, they wanted to do. They basically want to eliminate the left-hand turn out of New Boston Road. So that was before COVID. We would have to follow up with them and see where they are with that. Um, the traffic light probably won't happen, uh, just from a logistics point of view and all those good things. But long-term, the town adopted the, the Route 20, um, commercial tourist district plan, which called for kind of an overhaul of Route 20 from New Boston Road to Route 148. Um, I've submitted into what's called MAPIT, which is the DOT's project initiation tool, the first phase of that project for requesting funding, which is the 131 New Boston Road area, which in the commercial touristic plan calls for a roundabout. And that's long-term. So we're working on the long-term issue, uh, with DOT and CMRPC and the MAPIT tool, uh, which will bring to you, you know, a request for proposal for engineering for that. We'll have to pay the initial engineering, but that's long-term. Immediately, we'll re-engage with DOT on their thoughts of that intersection and see where they want to go. That in both of those comments will be responded to, to Mr. Riordan in a letter from my office.
Oh, fantastic. So the Mass DOT short-term is on board with not allowing a left turn out of New Boston, you think?
That was a preliminary conversation we had, you know, before the first of the year.
I get it. I just wanted to say for the record that that would have my support, because I do think something should be done at that, at that route.
Yeah, we'll just have to see where they are now in their thought process, but, yeah.
Okay, Jeff, I do believe in that report that we do have, there was an alternative to the roundabout. It was, um, a shorter thing. It was taking, you know, a right-hand turn and going up to the light, and then taking a left-hand turn, but making that bigger. But anyways, the report's there somewhere, uh, because I know that big roundabout, um, it's a conceptual plan that some company came up with when we were looking at it. But there isn't anyone that doesn't agree something needs to be done there. Okay, so, but thank you for staying on top of it.
Okay.
Okay, approval, approval of minutes? Uh, third minute? Anyone have additions, additions? Mary?
I just want to change, Ian, Joe. Um, on page 289, at the top, second line down, it, it states, "And at this point, she isn't fully supportive of the project." Could you scratch "fully"? And that's my only change. Topic 28, in second line, it says, "And at this point, she isn't fully supportive of the project." Scratch "fully."
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Hey, is there a motion to approve as amended?
Don't move, Jake.
Okay, is there a second?
Uh, second, Mike.
I'll second Chase's motion.
Hey, how do you vote, Ian?
Yes.
Hey, Mike?
Yes.
Theory?
Mary, yes.
Okay?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Hey, next, we have Citizens Forum?
Let me see if anybody's on the phone. Good evening. Is there anyone that would wish, wish to speak for Citizens Forum to the Board of Selectmen? Anyone would like to speak, uh, Citizens Forum to the Board of Selectmen? No one's on the phone, and there's no emails.
Hey, hey, is there a motion then to adjourn?
Don't move, Chase.
Okay. For the second?
Second, Mary.
Hey, Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Theory?
Mary, yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Don't forget, we have kind of a longer break because of August having five Mondays. Jeff?
Yeah, because of that, the, not, so at the end of next week, I'm going to try to take another couple of days, and hopefully I won't have to spend my time watching for the electric rates to, to pop up. But I'm going to try to take a few more days at the end of next week.
Have a great- No problem.
All right.
You didn't do too good last time.
No, but, you know, we got a lower rate, you know? What's to, what's to complain about?
True, true.
All right.
Okay, take care, everyone.
All right, good night.
Take care.
Good day.
Bye.
Bye.